...alternates, so I'm going to do a... here or not, start just...
Larry Hall.
Thank you. Larry.
I get the bells.
Mark Mickelson.
Yeah.
Christopher Craywick.
Michael Cantor.
Thank you. That's all five members. Anything that happens here tonight will require a majority if we take a decision on it. The majority in that board is three, the majority would be three regardless of whether we had five here or not, but we do. Alright, so what I'm going to do is we took attendance. I'm going to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please join us if you would like to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, right now, tonight, we have three items on our agenda. I will read them off, and then we will start with the first one. The process goes just like this. After I've read the first one, I'm going to ask whoever is representing that group to come up to the stand. Just tell us your name, tell us your representation, and then tell us what it is you'd like to do or what you're planning to do. After that, in each one of these sessions, we will allow the members of the board to ask you any questions. When that's done and you're done with your presentation, then what we'll do is we'll actually take a seat, then we will invite anyone from the general public who has comments for or against it. They are at that point given the opportunity to make those. At that point, I will close it right after that, at least that discussion. When that's done, then we will have a meeting here, or we will have a vote by the board, and we will make a decision. There are two to be made, and we can make them both here tonight. We will. We may ask you some questions about your zoning that you would like to have. Really what we're after is, one of the things is the state requires us to look and make sure that there is no significant environmental impact. It's what they call seeker. And what we're not going to, what we're going to do is we have a list of things that we don't allow right away. We make them go through a more detailed process, or if it's what we call a type 2, which is where I think these usually end up, then we would just call it a type 2 and we'll move on with that. Alright, so, and then we, at the end, what we do is we have some business here. You can leave right at the end of your presentation. We'll tell you where it's going. Then we've got some information here for the board, and some information that the board is going to share among itself. It's going to be like, what do we do with this in the future? Should we see if law needs to be changed? We don't have the power to change that law, but we can make recommendations to the village trustees who might like to do that. We also have some administrative things. Looks like there's going to be another option for attendance by the board members at these meetings. Looks like they can, pretty soon, well, we'll have more information on that. Alright, as we have no comments, I'm going to read the first item on our agenda. Mr. Richard Mayer, the owner of 15 Clover Drive, having a tax ID and as is listed. The applicant seeks to attach a covered front porch pursuant to the Village Code 175-11C. The required front-back setback in that area is 40 feet. What that means is you've got to be 40 feet from the measuring point back to the top. Looks like this one. The applicant proposes to build a front porch with a setback which will end up being 35.1 feet. What that means is he needs 4.9 feet of a variance, and is Mr. Murray here?
Here.
Come on up. Tell us who you are, tell us where you live, even though it's probably right there at 15, and then tell us what to do, you want to do.
My name's Richard Murray. I have 15 Clover Drive. I'm the owner. And we're looking to put a porch addition on the front of the house. We were going to, there's some old steps there that we want to get rid of, and we came up with this plan to put a porch on in front of the house. And that's what we're looking for, the variance.
Tell us about the porch that you're going to put on.
The porch is going to be, this is the contractor right here. He explains it. He can help me with it. It's a 12-by-6 foot porch. It's going to be covered, it's going to be a composite deck, and it's going to be covered.
That's going to come right off the roof? Right off? Be an extension to the roof?
Yes.
Well, it'd be more of a dormer lay-in.
Okay.
In front of it, so it'd be a gable then, facing the road. You know, columns coming down, rails, steps going up to it, composite decking, white railings.
Okay.
And, you know, roofing will match the house. Everything will be, will tie in.
Thank you. That was where I was going. Actually, one of the things that we like to have here is we like to have that the roof and/or the materials are similar to the house.
It's all going to fascia, soffits, gutters, everything's all going to flow exactly with the home.
And 35.1 feet from the measuring point of the road or the gutter? Alright. Questions from anybody on the board?
Electrical is the same thing?
Electrical?
Electrical. There would be a couple, like, candle lights in porch ceiling shining down. There's an existing coach light right now, but instead of having that next...
Tap into that.
Yeah, well, tap into that, correct, exactly.
I got questions.
Sure.
Who drew that?
My kid.
You the contractor?
Yeah. What's the problem?
12-foot wide porch.
Sure.
According to this, you got your joists 24 inches on center?
It's not the scale. Nothing, I never said it was the scale. Nor did I indicate it was the scale.
Okay.
It's just, it's a representation for, you know what I mean?
I'm a very literal guy. I take what I got literally.
Sure.
Alright.
Don't take things literally, not in this world.
Okay. Because composite, 16 on center minimums, preferably 12, they don't, not, they say 16s, but...
You can do your research on me. I don't cut corners.
Oh, I'm in the business, so I know. Are your porch posts continuous from your sonitude to the roof?
Correct.
Okay. Not a big fan of the way you're proposing to attach your rings to the posts. You're relying on the sheer strength of the bolts?
Correct.
And load fasteners. I would prefer, from a structural point of view, that the carrying load be, the ring be let into the posts.
Yeah, but then you're making a double notch, because then there's going to be a notch at the top for that, or...
Understood, or...
But you're talking about a six-foot post, a six-foot wide porch. There's going to be almost no bearing weight on that.
Nevertheless, you're still relying too much on the sheer strength of the...
But it's code, and we can use that, and that's the manner that I'm going to use.
Yeah, I know, code is code, but, okay, the end of the day.
I've been doing it long enough, I know.
Other questions? Mike?
I don't know, sir.
Over here?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. What I want to do right now is invite anyone from the general public to speak for or against it. Do the same thing. Just tell us who you are, and tell us your point of view. And what the record will show is that no one chose to do that, so we'll close that portion down. Is this a type 2?
Yes.
So can I, do we have to get a motion? Says this is a type 2?
I'll make that motion.
We've got a motion, seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Alright, so we're in type 2. Alright, then what we're looking for then is a 4.9-foot setback variance for the setback portion of the front of the porch.
I will make that motion for positive recognition to grant a 4.9-foot setback variance off of the porch.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve it. All those in favor?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded, seconded. Thank you, Lou. So we got a second, and we had all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Variance is granted. Good work with the porch.
Thank you.
Alright. Second one listed on our agenda is Mr. Martin Cattene. I don't know if he's here or not, but he's the owner of Three West Bays Street. That's out here. I'm not going to read the tax number. The applicant seeking preliminary and final site plan approval for the change of use of the first floor from mercantile occupancy classification to a business occupancy classification pursuant to Village Code 175-22B and 175-40B. The applicant also seeks a variance for the parking spaces where there is a number, where the number of parking spaces is one for each 300 square feet, roughly eight spaces for this particular place. They have none. We're aware of that. Pursuant to Village Code 175-53B, zero spaces are provided. The property is owned central business. It's actually right on the corner of South Avenue and Main Street.
North Avenue.
North Avenue. Okay.
So I am Paul Cattene. I am Martin Cattene's brother. Martin couldn't attend the meeting tonight, so I'm here in place of him. So I'm not as knowledgeable as he is about it. I think, Chris, you're very familiar with the project, and on-site is my understanding. So the building we're talking about is in the picture behind you at the corner. Interestingly, there's a bakery just a few houses down from there, I would note. The renters of the space, the business owners, Igor and Oksana, are here also and can answer any questions about the space. The space had been occupied by the bridal shop, which had moved out. So now this would be a small bakery with seating for 20, I believe, and it doesn't really increase the footprint of the current retail space that's there now in terms of drainage or power use or anything other than that parking spot variance that you described, Mark. So do you have any questions or any other information? I believe everyone has a copy of this packet, correct?
We do.
Okay. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
We're all open for questions. Anybody on the board?
Well, I have a question. You're not going to be baking there in the bakery? We're going to be baking. Pardon? Yes, we're going to be baking here.
So doesn't that change it from whatever it was, mercantile, to a business occupancy? Wouldn't it be considered a restaurant or cafe or...
No, because there are 150 people, it's still a business occupancy.
They will have an on-site, but it's a small convection oven that doesn't require any additional exhaust.
And you got an occupancy of...
I'm pretty sure it's seating for 20.
It's less than that.
Is it more than that?
No.
I'm sorry, do you know?
It's probably 10, 15, maybe.
I think he has written in this plan 20, but apparently the traffic would probably be much lighter than that.
Well, that makes sense to me, the 10 or 15. But 20 people in there in tables would be a lot.
Yeah, just a max number. I think that they, if your full seating would be 20, I think he has here. Put it somewhere.
Yes, it says here seating for 20 people.
Seating for 20 people. Thank you.
So you won't be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
You won't be frying like doughnuts, anything like that, strictly oven?
No, just simply oven, and it's going to be a convection oven.
So you don't need an exhaust?
Yeah. It's like a small bakery, not like frying or grilling or something like that.
Fire or...
Electrical, convection oven.
No, no, what I was getting at is you're going to put 10 or 15 people into a building which doesn't typically have them in it right now. Do you have to upgrade, or are you going to upgrade the fire evacuation system, or anything like that, or does one exist? Is there going to be an inspection, is really what I'm asking?
Absolutely. Yeah, we're going to do everything that's going to be proposed, but they don't have to upgrade any of the heat racks or hotels in existing buildings.
Okay, and do you think the fire extinguisher system or the...
Overhead system is probably there.
Exactly. I don't believe there is sprinklers, but they will have the required extinguishers.
Have you visited the site already?
Yeah.
Because when I went there, Marty gave me a walkthrough.
Yep.
And pointed out a fire extinguisher and some detection device on the ceiling.
The fire marshal and I walked through it already with him, yeah.
Okay.
They don't use an anseul system or anything?
No, it's just a convection oven.
And so whatever the number of fire extinguishers for that square footage or that total occupancy will be there. Other questions from members on the board?
I have one other question. Now, that building has parking in the back.
It does.
Marty owns that entire building. Would that eliminate the need for a variance for parking?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Oh, well, I thought you knew everything.
You, you know. I'm just wondering.
Marty had explained to me that most of the traffic, and I think Oksana would, and Igor would say the same, they're expecting traffic to be early in the day, in the midday, where most of the parking fills up after 3:00 PM.
And I guess more out of curiosity, what are your hours going to be?
Maybe from 7:00 to 3:00 PM.
To 3:00, 7 to 3:00?
Yeah.
And what kind of goodies are you going to be baking?
You're going to bake cookies, brownies, buns, maybe some Ukrainian dessert, because I'm from Ukraine.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have a bakery in a little Japan.
What's your planned date to start, if you were to start?
Maybe next month?
Yeah, in the months or so, yeah.
About 30 days, you would appear.
Chris, has signage been dealt with here?
I don't remember if there's a sign application or not, but if they need it, we'll take care of it.
We don't have it, so...
There's a picture.
I don't think there'd be a variance for it. If they're going to put the same type up in front of it, or stem from the windows.
It's a plan now.
They may have applied for, I'd have to go back and check.
Fair enough.
That's for signage, is that what I understand?
Yeah.
Is your picture accurate of what the signage might look like?
Probably not.
Probably not, okay. Except in the top, you'll probably have this at the top. Is that where you're meeting, at the very top? Maybe not in the windows, but the label of
This part? More questions, Larry? This board's not dealing with the signs.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
Yep.
So don't worry about it. And as far as the parking, I got to know where I'm going, though. You know how I get there. You got 30 days before they even move. I believe that Mr. Cattene doesn't own any of the parking lot right behind the building. That portion of the parking lot is actually owned by the village in conjunction with the Veterans Park.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. And then farther west, Coach owns most of the parking lot. But in any event, the whole park is leased to the village for public parking.
So a variance would be needed for parking?
Well, it's not, it's more of, more of a, not really a variance, but a finding that there's sufficient off-street parking such that the parking requirement is waived. In the past, as you see in your papers, the business in the basement got a variance for three parking spaces, but it's a smaller... Smaller, smaller square footage upstairs. Other questions from members on the board? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so remember that step would be you're just waiting for approval, which kind of happens later?
Let me tell you what's going to happen is, sorry, we're going to close you down. We're going to ask if anybody from the general public would like to speak for or against it. We give them the, give the general public that opportunity to speak for or against it. They will or they won't, they'll sit back down, then I'll close that portion. Then what we will do is I will seek motions from people on the board, and the way I see it, we've got at least two variances here. We've got a final site approval, and then the parking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, right now, anybody from general public want to speak for or against this?
So we're going to be free samples when we open?
Are you going to decide if I'm ready?
No.
Is there coffee in there?
Coffee?
Alright, so we closed that portion. No one from the general public wanted to speak for or against it. So we can do this, and I would do this as two variances. I probably would do it.
Variants combined.
And one is the allowance of parking being at zero, so we look for a motion on that. The first thing you have to do is...
Seeker.
Oh, alright. Seeker, and it's a type 2 because it's simply reconstruction of an existing structure. Alright, we get a motion for type 2?
Make motion, type 2 action under seeker with no significant environmental impact.
Alright, we've got a motion, seconded?
Now seconded.
Seconded by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Alright, we've done that. We did that portion. Now, moving on to, once we've done the seeker thing, again, back to the spaces. The applicant seeks a variance for parking spaces where the number of spaces required is one for each 300 square feet. However, in this case, there will be zero, and that's what we're going to go for.
Yes, I will make that motion for positive recommendation for issuance of variance for parking space requirements for the revised change of use, whereas eight spaces are required, but none are directly provided or available.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve that with zero spaces.
Now seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None. We've got the first one. Alright, second one is, we know what type of seeker it is. What we're looking for is they're looking for a primary and a final site plan approval for the change of use on the first floor from mercantile occupancy certification to business certification. And recognize, they may come at a later date or may not with a signed issue, but we're not dealing with that right now. So we got anyone who wants to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Michael makes the motion. The motion is?
That allow the change from a mercantile occupancy classification to a business occupancy classification.
Okay, we have a motion on the table.
On the first, first floor.
Yes.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Congratulations. So what is implied in that motion was you granted preliminary and final site plan approval? That was what I said in the beginning. We're looking for preliminary and final approval.
That's actually what the action, what they were seeking.
Rephrase.
Rephrase. Just so the minutes reflect, that you granted preliminary and final site plan approval.
The last question, Oksana had suggested 30 days. Is, are they bound to 30 days?
You are not. That was a question that I asked of the potential owners or operators. That was just a curiosity question. It did not have a regulatory requirement associated with it.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
I think the...
Good luck.
No, but this board's approval, so it's either six months or a year before. One or the other. I can't remember off the top of my head. It's one year, and they usually have to take some action.
Correct.
On the variance within the one year. Okay, third and final motion that we've got here is Corey, and I may pronounce this wrong when I'm going to say Feldbauer.
Yep.
Alright, Corey, the owner of 166 Stanford Street for the second month in a row.
I can say it.
But anyhow, oh, at that tax number, the applicant is seeking to install a fence on the property line higher than what's allowed. What's the maximum back there is going to be six feet. What they want to build is an eight-foot. The neighbor on the opposite side is the fire department, and that's where the fence is going. Tell us who you are, what you're trying to do.
My name is Corey Feldbauer. I'm the owner at 166 Sanford Street. We are looking to install a fence, not only on that side of the property, but to enclose a whole backyard to the southeast and west end of the property. The eight-foot variance, we're looking in particular on that side up against the fire department, which would be on the west side. And we would also be seeking, if allowable, on the south side as well. The property behind us is approximately three foot above grade from our property, so a six-foot fence then turns into a three-foot fence when put on a property line on the south. So we're looking entirely for an eight-foot variance to be, I guess, negotiated or discussed further.
Okay, tell us, tell me again then what you want to do. You want to put an eight-foot fence up all the way around the backyard on three sides?
Up to an eight foot, yes.
Up to an eight foot?
Correct. We're not as much concerned with the east side of the property, but just, I guess, for consistency, we'd be unsure if it would be kind of weird if we had a six-foot fence on that side.
Is that the side that faces your neighbor, or...
Yes, yeah, it's the side that would face, I'm not sure what, as well. So I don't know if that would be an issue having, just a difference in height.
What happens, and this is a curiosity question for our legal group, what happens if we were to grant a variance for a fence in the backyard to be eight feet high, but they only installed one side of it at eight foot, the other sides were done at six? I think that after a year, if we haven't taken that action, it goes away for the other sides, but I don't know whether we have to take an action on that.
Well, I think six foot's allowed. Six foot is allowed without a variance. So if they wanted to put the six-foot fence, they could do that.
But, alright, and I understand that, but what was, what was just requested to me was an eight-foot variance for the entire fence all the way around. If they only put it on the west side, then in one year, if they don't take an action, typically the variance goes away.
Well, you're right.
And then you would be...
But you would assume, you would assume if they're, are you installing the fence yourself?
No, but we do have work scheduled for the weekend.
So you would think if they're going to, if somebody installed the fence, they're going to do the whole fence and not just one side of it and then come back.
No, that's fine, but what I heard from him saying was that he was going to do one side, and he wanted an option on the other side.
So I assume that seeking approval for an eight foot for the entirety of the backyard would be the right action to do, and then if it was not allowable, at least we would know. So give us the option to do an eight foot on the east side, depending on how that might look.
And is that what you would prefer, to have all three sides eight feet?
I would discuss with the contractor and see kind of how that would look, if it looked funny. Kind of looking, I guess, for recommendations for you guys as well, if you think that might look just unreasonable.
So your eight foot on the, let's talk about the west side of the apartment, the fielding side.
Yeah.
And your justification for eight foot was because of the field days and people coming in?
Yeah, just a lot of strangers, a lot of traffic in and out. I do have an eight-year-old son, so it's kind of privacy.
Totally understand that. That eight foot, is it going to break...
That eight foot is it gonna break the plane in the front of the house, or, because there's a, there's a chain link fence there now, I assume that the fire department put that in there. So are you, are you stopping the fence at the front plane of your house? Or are you going all the way to the street like the cyclone?
No, 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 so it's gonna go to on the rear corner of our garage.
Okay, and because you have a huge bush there that offers you some, you had some cedar trees that somebody has planted there now.
Yeah, I planted the arbor buddy.
Okay, and I'm, I love it, I like it when they speak the botanical terms, the tree of life. So are you putting, I'm assuming you're putting your fence between the arbor buddy and the cyclone fence?
Correct.
Current cyclone?
Yeah, and I guess to be clear, just so you guys know, the chain link fence currently is about 12 feet off of my property line. Fire department does own a 10, 12 feet off of that encroaching in, probably my yard, but it's maintained by me, but owned by the fire department.
So this fence isn't gonna cause you trouble with that, is it?
No, I actually attended the fire department board meeting and discussed, I'm gonna maintain that space in between, just because it is in this buffer between, probably not.
And you're putting this wood fence that I see on, on which you gave us? You know, I personally, I would tell you personally, I would prefer that you didn't put an eight-foot fence in the back and in the, on the east side of that.
Okay.
I think it starts looking like a castle mentality, and I understand you're building the castle on your flank there, because it's being encroached by the moms, I get that. And so, but your justification in the back was because of the grades?
Yeah, it's approximately three foot higher on their property line, so there would really, I guess, minimal privacy on the south side of our neighborhood.
Okay, and then their fence that they have up is within just doing their backyard, not their land, their total land?
Correct.
Okay, because there's a, there's a surveyor's mark here in one of your drawings that you gave?
Yeah, I had the property survey.
Okay, that's basically where the telephone, where the electrical pole is?
It go, it kinda comes at an angle, so from the pole to the center of the hill, it kinda angles downward.
And so then the fence on the, well, just so I get my eyes, the fence on the west side, excuse me, the fence on the east side is behind the dusha that you put in?
Correct, yeah.
And that's coming how far aboard, same distance, about?
Yeah, that would, it would be pretty much equal to where it would come from back of the garage, it's about 100 feet from the back corners on both sides.
Yeah, you have a deep yard, thank you, I appreciate it.
Corey, have you talked to Sue and Lee about the fence?
I have, and Sue was actually planning on coming into that, just in support.
Would she, she wouldn't mind the, you did an eight-foot fence back there?
Correct.
You gonna put a gate on it?
There'll be two gates, one at the front by the garage, and actually one near the rear, so I can maintain that strip in between the fire department line, because there are those, that big wooden bushes, and I'd like to keep that.
Yeah, I saw it, yeah.
So you'd have sense.
Okay, you mentioned there was an elevation change in the back of the yard there.
Yeah.
Which is why you might not, so if you went, the fence on the east side is gonna be eight feet high. What you were gonna try and do?
West side.
Or, excuse me, west side, yes, one of four west goes to west. You were gonna, the top was gonna be about the same, that's why you would change the back? So in other words, if it were eight feet and there was an elevation back here and it was all eight feet and all of a sudden that would be high, you were saying you wanted to bring them level?
Yes, but the main reason is because the elevation is about three feet higher, the south property, I mean.
Got it.
So I bought a six-foot panel and I held it up, and I had my wife standing on top of the hill, and it doesn't do anything.
Got it.
That's the request for the south end, and then really the east end is more, if it's gonna look funny having a six-foot there, which it might not, because there is a little bit of an elevation change coming down, I'm totally fine with having to do a six-foot on that side, but it would be more consistent for community.
I think that would be my preference is if you did a six on the east side, because looking from Sherwood towards the fireman's field would be more of a normal type of scenario where you got the six-foot fence, I could see where providing the eight-foot fence on Sue and Lee's side because of the grade change, it would actually look maybe like a six-foot high fence rather than reality, and I definitely agree with the fireman's field, because I back up to the fireman's field, I'd love to put up an eight-foot fence in my backyard, so.
You know some people that can make that.
Okay, other questions by anyone from the board? Okay, thank you very much. Unless you have other questions for us?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody from the general public wanna speak for or against this? Go.
Richard Walden, 20 Elm Street, as you all know very well, my name. My only question is, I believe the fence on the fire department side, our code says that a fence has to drop down in height as it comes farther from, from the house out to the road?
And it's staying in the back.
But he's staying behind that, yeah.
The road, this fence is gonna end at the, at your house?
At the back corner of the house.
Back rear of the garage.
It's gonna end at the house?
Yep.
So it will not extend all the way out to the sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Yep.
It would be nice if it could.
Okay, anyone got other questions for, do you have any questions for us? Very good, thank you very much. All right, so before we go any farther, it is a fence that goes up to eight feet, at least on the side. I suspect very strongly that that's a type two seeker issue without significant environmental issues?
Yeah, any area variance on residential property is a type two issue.
Fair enough, so we got a motion, do we have a motion that it's a type two?
I'll make the motion that it's a type two pursuant to seeker.
Thank you, Michael, seconded?
Well, seconded.
All right, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, so we're a type two, we don't have to do that. Now what I'm looking for, go ahead, Larry.
Mike, can you put in wordage with that you said before about having it six foot on the east side and eight and eight?
Well, but this, I guess that's a discussion item that we, that's my thought, is at least from the perspective of trying to provide the most privacy to Corey and his family, and not be a significant impact, I guess, to the neighborhood, because most neighborhood fences are probably either four feet or six feet. When, when you drive down Sherwood Avenue, it would look more like a residential type of fence.
What I'm saying is I totally agree with that, that would be something that I would vote for.
Okay.
I'm a little hesitant not to vote for that. You explained yourself extremely well, and I understand what you're doing, but it's just me, maybe.
I mean, it's, it's more of if Corey's willing to, we're proposing that scenario, that you got at least two members that might vote for that, if that's something that you're willing to maybe live with, then we could possibly take a vote on that, or if you feel like you wanna.
So I have some chia here, now that I'm trying to.
What we have in front of us is a request for an eight-foot fence.
Right, but he was open to, because two, or six foot is allowed by code, so he needs a two-foot variance by.
For a very limited portion.
For a limited portion, and I don't know, I've never done an eight-foot fence in the village, so I don't, I don't, I didn't.
There was one behind western house.
Wow. And again, that begs up to, highly commercial, commercial.
So this, and this is a question I'm going to defer off to the legal group, can we take something that hasn't been public notice and change this here at this meeting, or do we only have the ability to deal with what's been presented? And by that, I mean an eight-foot variance.
If the applicant wants to withdraw his application for an eight-foot fence on the east side of the property, he can do that, you can still act on what's left, which is the west side and the south side.
Okay.
He can put up a six-foot fence without, probably just getting a permit, doesn't need approval.
How do you feel about that?
I am absolutely okay with that.
You're all right with it?
Yeah.
So we don't need, we don't deal with then the south, and we don't deal with the east, because six foot is allowed.
No, he's gonna do, he's gonna do eight feet on the south and the west, he's not gonna do eight feet on the east.
Yeah, the variance would be to allow an eight-foot tall fence on the south and west property lines.
And you understand that?
Yes.
Eight on the west, eight on the south, six on the east.
Correct.
Right, all right, so it's eight on the west, eight in the back, and six on the east side, which is the side that faces out this way.
The neighbors.
You could even swoop that up. Wouldn't even notice.
You wouldn't even notice.
Does not cause you any harm or otherwise problem if, if we change the variance?
Saves me about $2,500.
There you go, that's a good reason.
That's a darn good reason, yes, okay. So what we've got is, and Mike, if you wanna go forward with it?
Well, I guess I'll make the motion that I, a positive recommendation for a two-foot high variance for the west side and the south side.
So 165, then 84, that's nine, six is 14, 249, then you're, of eight-foot fence.
Your man's up, and I trust you.
All right. The variance is for the height of the fence, not for the length of the fence, so I wouldn't put 249, you might be off, what if it's?
No, that was just for reference, that's two.
Okay, well, don't make it, don't make it part of the motion, the motion is, is a two-foot variance.
Two-foot, a two-foot variance. West, west. To allow an eight-foot tall fence on the south and west property.
Could I come up and ask one more question?
Absolutely.
Can I ask it from here?
Yes.
So there will be a gate coming off the corner of the garage, there's about four to five feet between the garage and the west side of the fence, I guess, just confirming what would be allowable there, if we should match the eight-foot fence with an eight-foot gate there. It's gonna be pretty much only a gate in that section that we could fit in that, about five feet outside.
So you basically just want, like, as you're looking at your house, both sides are eight feet tall?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's, that is the issue. Well, yeah, that's still the, that's not in the front yard, right?
Yeah.
It's either in the side or rear yard, and, you know, so.
It is facing north, so I just wanted to make sure.
But it's gonna come off one of those two sides, we just talked about.
It'll come off the west, yeah.
There you go.
So the, so the variance would include?
Part of the north.
The little section from the garage to the, to the property line.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I meant.
Anything else? I mean, you got us, go with it. All right.
Do we get a second on that?
We haven't yet, and I haven't asked for it, so we've got a motion on the floor to approve this as an eight-foot fence on the west and on the south side.
And the north.
And a portion of the north.
And a portion of the north on the west side of the garage.
Just for clarification.
Just for clarification, there we go, seconded on that?
Yes.
Very seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, congratulations, sorry that took so long. Thank you, Mr. No problem. All right. One thing that's also on our agenda tonight is there is apparently a way for us to attend these meetings.
Virtually.
Virtually?
Only, only under extraordinary circumstances.
Tell us what that is, if any. If you want it, I've got a copy of it if you need it.
So it's pretty self-explanatory, if, if due to extraordinary circumstances, you can't attend a meeting which includes disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities, or any other significant or unexpected factor or event which precludes your physical attendance. So in other words, you go on vacation, no, that's not an extraordinary, or you just don't, you feel like staying home, no, that's not it, if you're sick or disabled, that's, that's an extraordinary circumstance.
The only poor question I have is we have two, two active alternates, so can we pull those in at any time, or, and what would happen if somebody called up and said whatever, one of the excuses?
Well, that depends on the board member, if one of the, one of you five regular board members, if someone is ill or disabled or whatever, and you wanna do it by video conference, and if, instead of doing that, you wanna, you know, talk to the two out there, and let's be here today and say, hey, can you show up at my stead, then as long as you got a quorum, then you don't have to do the video conference. But it's sort of up to the individual that wants to do it by video conference.
Fair enough, I understand it, anybody got any questions?
Because you have to, you have to notify the chairperson unless it's, the chairperson is seeking to appear by video conference, and then, is there a deputy chair of this board?
There is not a vice chair or a deputy chair, there are many of the boards around the town.
Well, you guys should appoint someone as a deputy, because in that case, you notify that deputy and the, and the village clerk in advance that, hey, I can't show up, and this is the reason why.
Questions for that?
Is this a New York thing, New York State?
Yeah, about a year, year and a half ago, New York State amended the open meetings law to allow that.
This is when you're supposed to say it's great to live in the New York State, isn't it? All right, we've got that, you guys know that, what I'm gonna do is I'll say, I'll walk away here, and we'll take this appointing deputy or executive, something like that, and see if the board of trustees, because I think they have to do it, I'm not so sure that we can do it. So, all right, let's go, the other thing that we had on our agenda was two items, we were gonna talk briefly about sheds and briefly about driveways. Anybody can start off with what you've got, you have some information there, what I will do is I will start it off with, with driveways myself. We've got a fair number of, of these things coming before us, when they come before us, they're all over the place, I don't understand, and I've been, I've been working, walking around this, I don't understand, number one, what an apron is, although I know it's that area between the street and the sidewalk, but if there is no sidewalk, is the whole driveway the apron? I know that if there's a one-car garage, we can have 12-foot wide driveway, but if we, we can add 12 feet to that for, for additional parking, but you can add just 12. If you have a two-car garage, you can add 12 again up to, and it doesn't say a max. If you have a two car garage, you can add twelve again up to, and it doesn't say a maximum, but that's what I view it as, is to a maximum of thirty-six feet at that point, so you can have this extra driveway. And if you're over there, what if I've only got ten feet between my driveway and my property line? Does that mean I can only have eight? Does that mean I can only have nine? Does that mean I don't know what it means? But that's all the things. And, um, what happens, and this, this all comes into my mind, when we've got a two car garage that I can look at, and the driveway comes right straight off the two car garage, and I got two lanes in my driveway. What happens if it's turned the other way? And we've had that, and now the garage has actually turned out its side and they wanna expand it? There is no garage door there, can they expand it? I don't know. Or is that just a variance that we're gonna allow parking, what I would call, in the front yard at that point? And by the way, we don't make changes in the law. What we do is we say to the trustees, this is one of the things that we've seen, we would, you know, you guys have now seen it, see if you want us to just continue to deal with it as variances, or do you wanna change the code? And they would have to do that. And the other one has to do with the sheds, and we can only deal with one at a time, so why don't we stop right there and leave, leave this on the driveways? Thoughts? Has anybody researched it? Has anybody done anything?
I will admit that I did not do any research on this.
It's all right, there's not a lot out there, you can, you could go around, and, and I tried it. You go to Fairport, you go to Brockport, you go to Arundecoyote, you go to Parrecton, you go to, you go every place except Penfield, because we got an expert for that in it. But, um, yeah, there's a fair amount out there.
I looked around and noticed many houses that have driveways in front of their house. When they have their driveway redone, they...
Well, or a U-shaped driveway in the front of the house.
Right, which is not allowed, I don't think, and either is the, either is extra asphalt in front of the, uh, that's a question.
If there's not a garage door there, you're not supposed to put asphalt there.
But what would the difference be between the asphalt and someone paving it for a sitting area?
Well put.
I mean, it's in the code that you can't park in front of your house. You know, your driveway can't be in front of the house, so, you know.
But if the garage is there, and the garage is turned, so it's now, you, you come up and you turn in, is that in front of the house then, if you're over in front of the garage?
You're saying for a side load driveway?
Yeah.
Or a side load, uh... Well, in that case, I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think that would be considered in front of the house if you're driving up your, your driveway into a side load garage and you park in front of the house.
See, I would've thought it was, because there is no garage door there, and that's how I define the driveway.
But I could be wrong. Let's do sheds.
Okay, sheds are kind of easy. If you've driven down the road, take a look, particularly when you drive south on two fifty, take a look at the sheds that are up for sale out by the road.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Now, we have a requirement that says one hundred and ninety-two square feet, all right? Or one hundred and twenty, if you're in a different zone. But it says or one percent, but or, but that one percent is a little bit further, because it says one percent or one hundred and ninety-two, whichever one is less. So what they're saying is smaller. One hundred and ninety-two feet is twelve by sixteen. Most of the sheds I see on the road, and a lot of what comes before us, is more than twelve by fifteen.
Twelve by sixteen and sixteen by...
Twelve by sixteen, sixteen.
Sixteen by twenty is a, that's a garage, I mean, that's a small lot.
To me, it looks like that, but...
I would agree, and I think why we came up with one hundred and ninety-two was for five years there, we were coming in with everybody wanting twelve by sixteen sheds.
So you said, okay, we'll do it.
So is this, is this the norm size shed? And then we should probably just say, all right, if everybody's gonna get a twelve by sixteen, then, then that way we have a base to start from. And then that's when I threw in the one percent for the lot size, because, you know, if you got a five acre lot, there's a couple of five acre lots.
But whichever one is less, and it's one percent or one ninety-two, whichever one is less.
Right, right.
So if, you know, if you've got a five acre lot, one ninety-two is gonna be less.
Well, right.
So do we want to recommend, do, do we like what we've got? Do we wanna deal with it? Or do we, you know, because we're gonna deal with it anyhow, even if we changed it to two hundred and twenty square feet, somebody will come in with two hundred and twenty-five or two hundred and fifty.
Would you say that somebody's gonna ask for more?
I, I, they're always gonna be, and I agree with Peter, that you start getting to a ten by twenty, that's a garage, it's not...
Looks like a garage.
Right. That's my, my personal opinion.
What's the town code? I looked that up, I think that's one...
Town is one ninety-six.
One ninety-six.
So this is like the speed line. If the speed line's fifty-five, people go sixty. If the speed line is sixty-five, people go seventy-five. So if you keep raising this, they're maybe bigger, and bigger, and bigger. I would rather deal with it, even though it's sometimes annoying.
Yeah.
And, and, but I'd rather deal with each one individually. My concern about this is, is not what we have written right now. My concern, especially if it deals with the, it overlaps to, um, the drivings, is that when you have people come in and say, well, everybody has this already, and then when you drive down that street and you see that that is not the case, that is not the case. Or if it is the case, which of those residents got a variance and which one didn't? And even if you find somebody who broke the variance law, what do you do about that? Go in there with a jackhammer and get it taken out, or have them do that? Or do you, uh, penalize them financially for every square foot they went over? This is, this becomes a bit of a problem, because there are people who will do it and ask for forgiveness after. You know, it's like a kid in class, I've had many of those kids.
I didn't mean to do that, but I did.
It's just something about that test paper of his that I could just see all the answers. Well, so my point is, is that there's a lot of issues that get involved in here, and, and I don't know which ones we have, I have very little control over them, and I don't know when you step in and do that. And, and do we want everybody stepping in and doing that?
Well, when do we want to do that? Because we've got, we've got one ninety-two or one percent, whichever is less. But with something, and if you, and I don't know who looked at the, the information that was nice enough to come our way. How many denials did you see in there? None. And, you know, I've gone as far as...
That was for a second shed, though.
Right.
Yes.
All right.
Remember that.
But, it's, there's very few, and they're coming into us, and, you know, is, is this what the trustees want? Do they want us to continue to be a check on that and make sure it's reasonable? Or can you put a two hundred square foot shed in your backyard, Pete?
In my backyard?
Yes, instead of taking up the whole thing, you wouldn't have to mow as much.
I, yeah, but, when you got a sixty by a hundred and eighty foot lot?
Right.
I mean, you've got like a second apartment back there.
It does seem like it.
I'd rather deal with it on a case by case basis and just keep it the way it is.
Every application should be treated on its own merits.
Because then maybe they might say, you know what, I don't wanna go to the zoning board, I'm, I'll just do my one hundred and ninety-two or whatever I'm allowed, and that's good, good for you.
Okay, I'll get, I'll, I'll give us one, and, and then we can probably break here, but, um, I'm curdled. We approved a second driveway on that particular house. You know why we did that? Because the garage above it was turned into an apartment in the back, separated from the house. And I was thinking to myself, since when do we allow a second apartment to be built like that without any permit?
Pre-existing, I'm conforming.
Pardon me?
Pre-existing, I'm conforming.
But, but, that was, that was my, that was my personal...
Before nineteen fifty.
Issue with that, and we, what we did is we went ahead and we approved that. And that's all right, that's within our rights. But the question would be is, you know, and, and somebody put it out here, do we wanna say to the trustees, hey, you know, you might wanna, you, you need to be at least aware of this occurring, or change things? We can't change it, all we can do is say yes or no when things come into us. And I don't, and I, I looked hard to find codes in other towns that were significantly different from ours. They're not.
Well, the, the town basically doesn't even regulate driveways. If you look at the definition of a driveway under the, the town of Webster's zoning ordinance, it just says a place that, an area that goes from the, from a private street or a road, you know, to a structure.
Yep. So what that tells me, and, and if I, if I think about that in my own mind, there can be no expansion to that. Because it defines what it is.
Yeah, I mean, I think with driveways, though, you're, you're very limited, again, by the lot size, uh, where the driveway is in relationship to the property line. So, I mean, I'm looking at the postage stamps, and then, you know, they're sixty foot wide, they're usually one car garage, which, I looked in one, it was a pain in the ass, you know, my wife would get the garage, because it's snowing, and then she would leave before me, and anyways, so I get the, the headache and all that, but at the same point, I'm, I would be okay with maybe upsizing it to allow for easier parking, so you could get by, side by side, but then you're limited by the property line, but then you also got the code that says no parking in front of your house, so you're kinda, you're, it's a tough situation. So, I mean, I think you gotta keep that as a check every time somebody wants to widen the driveway.
Information that Karen's been giving us for each application, that's helpful. I can see how many on the street have done this.
Absolutely. Okay, other thoughts or things? Do we have anything coming up for November?
Uh, it's past Dolby, they have not submitted paperwork yet, but...
That'd be the week before Thanksgiving. Okay, um, so before we leave, go ahead.
November twenty-first.
Okay, so before we leave, anybody have a chance to take a look through the meeting minutes, have any comments, or any corrections or addendums to it, or would we like to approve them as they are?
I'm making a motion to approve the N S A.
We have a motion on the table to approve the meeting minutes, seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
All right, twenty-first, thank you.